Ready when you are Cindy.
You're ready, okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please stand and salute the nation's flag.
Flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney; in addition township manager Don Genuso, Jack King Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukowinski Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf Director of Public Works, engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Announcements, I'm gonna quickly review what's on there, but I was, there's also two announcements that didn't get added to the agenda. Cecil Township Parks and Recreation presents Simply Christmas. Join us for our first ever Simply Christmas. Families can enjoy how the Grinch stole Christmas, have some popcorn and hot chocolate, and make a craft to help decorate the township tree. And of course, a special visit from Santa too. This event is free but space is limited. You must sign up individually, each person attending, including parents, so that we have an accurate head count. Sign up link is available on the Cecil Community Parks and Recreation page. We are offering two showings to accommodate more families Saturday, this Saturday, December 9th, 1:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the Township Building here at 3599 Millers Run Road. I'll put this up here in case at the end of the meeting, somebody wants to come take a picture of it or whatever to share it, but that's this Saturday. Also, there's a blood drive on Sunday, December 24th, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Cecil Number 3 Volunteer Fire Department. It's at 3351 Millers Run Road, Cecil, PA 15321. And you can schedule an appointment to donate. It's all on their Facebook page if you have Facebook, but I'll also leave this up here. You can also, there's a QR code on this if you want to come up and scan the QR code to make an appointment. But again, that's Christmas Eve night, or not night, day, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Don't forget that the Cecil Township Historical Society is gonna have a National Miners' Day recognition celebration at the Miners Pavilion in Cecil Park on Wednesday, December 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. National Miners' Day marks the anniversary of the worst mining accident in American history when 362 miners died in an explosion in West Virginia on this date in 1907. In 2009, Congress proclaimed the day National Miners' Day in appreciation of the accomplishments and sacrifices of the nation's miners. The C.T., Cecil Township Historical Society hopes the community will gather with us as we honor the Cecil Township miners who worked and those who died in the area mines. Local clergy members will attend as well as the Boy Scouts and local dignitaries. Refreshments will be served in the Generations Room. That's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's this Wednesday. Don't forget the Ladies Auxiliary is sponsoring a family bingo at Cecil Volunteer Fire Company Number 3 at 3351 Millers Run Road on Sunday, December 10th. The doors open at 11:00 a.m. and bingo begins at noon. Admission is $5, which includes 13 games. There will be a Chinese auction, 50/50 door prizes. The kitchen will be open at 11:00 a.m. Tickets are on sale, cash only, at the Cecil Township Municipal Building here. And children must be accompanied by an adult. Don't forget that we're getting closer and closer to Christmas, although don't tell me that because I still haven't finished shopping. The municipal offices will be closed on Friday, December 22nd, at noon, and remain closed Monday, December 25th in observance of the Christmas holiday. Normal business hours will resume on December 26th at 8:00 a.m. The municipal offices will be closed on Friday, December 29th, 2023, at noon, and will remain closed Monday, January 1st in observance of the New Year's holiday. Don't forget our board meeting, because January 1st falls on a Monday next in January 2024. So our board meeting will actually be Tuesday that week, Tuesday, January 2nd. Oops, if I would've kept reading, I would've saw that. At 7:00 p.m., it's our reorganization meeting immediately, followed by our regular monthly meeting. And the Cecil elected auditors will hold their reorganization meeting on Wednesday, January 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Dan, you wanna do an update?
So I'm here tonight on the discussion session to bring the board an update on the Public Works project. Significant progress has been made.
Dan, I'm not sure anybody can like can hear, thank you.
Significant progress has been made on the building. This is a photo that was taken on the 29th. The building is now fully enclosed. The garage doors are up. The additional paving has been installed around the building, which was left open before to allow some of the other construction to occur. So it's, it's all moving in the right direction. All of the other contractors are inside the building now, and they're working on plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and all the other things it takes to put the building together. So I've given you a brief project status. What I'd like to do is review the budget with you tonight, the schedule, and some recommended next steps, and then answer any questions if the board has them. As I said, the building is, is completely enclosed, and they work on everything, including the fire systems. This is another drone shot that we took recently on the 29th that gives you a better perspective of the building. You can see this is, this is Clear Road. This is the entrance to the site. The building as it's situated was put at the operation of the building. Most of the operations would be on this side, away from the residential side of the project. This is the office sort of here in the back to give you a perspective. All the utilities come in from this corner of the building. This is a better view of the fabrication shop and some of the other smaller shops that they're gonna use to work on the vehicles are on this side of the building, and this would be the office. These are the doors, obviously, to enter on one side and, and come out the other. Just another perspective again, again, from the office side of the building that you can see the parkings, the, the outline of the parking in front of the building is, is outlined here. Again, this is the other side where the trucks will come out of the building. And again, as I said, the utilities, this would be Clear Road on this side of the building right here, and you can see Clear Road in the foreground here, the access up into the site. So just to refresh everybody's memory, there, there was a lot of cutting of the project. I'll say cutting or reducing the scope value engineering, whatever you wanna call it, to make sure that we stayed within budget on the project. A number of those things have been implemented and they are in place. Some of the scope items that, that were not included, we'll talk about here now, especially the landscaping and some of the paving that, that still were recommending to be done. But before I mention that, I just wanted to refresh everybody on the budget for the project. This lists out all the particular contracts and how much is remaining to be paid on those. The most is still due to the general contractor and some of the subs related to finishing up the building and the fuel station, which will be here. I guess the tanks have been delivered or it's, it's soon gonna be under construction. So the available funds, based upon the, the remaining funds from the first bond issue and the second bond issue are accounted for here in the top, the 4.751.
If that all's loud. If everyone's ready to hear, I'll talk louder.
Is it still live? Yeah, is it still recording?
So the, the remaining funds, as you can see, there's, there's about 1.258 million the capital part of the project. And what we wanted to distract you is at least a couple of things that are required to spend some of that money. Under the general contract, when we rebid the fire installation for the fire contract for the project, the building had already been awarded, and it did not include a separate fire pump.
You can have one.
After that, those things require an installation of this separate room. Along with that, there was some additional electrical work that was required for the pumping system and the, a little bit of mechanical work. But I will caveat that with the total savings between the original bid and what was, what was actually awarded was $750,000. We started at $1 million on the fire suppression. We were able to get that down to $250,000. It just requires some additional work to install the room that was not originally included. So that's probably the biggest change that needs to be done on the building. Has to be done. So that amounts to roughly that. Just to show you the master plan here, so again, getting back to the budget.
In those areas. And then we would recommend also putting the final wearing course, course on the entire project, which was eliminated to cut costs originally. So those are two things that we would recommend to be added back into the project. So I, I mentioned those, the cost on the additional binder. The wearing course estimate is here, so that's the two paving items. They amount to about $206,000. So in addition to that, there's availability if the board wants to go forward. Public Works has quotes on plant materials, which they would install. They could get the site landscape. There's plenty of topsoil available at the site. Get the area of topsoil and get the plants in. And then in addition to that, we had talked about improvements to Clinger Road to improve the vertical and horizontal site distance near the entrance to the Public Works facility. That's been talked about since day one. We have a concept on that and a price at about $270,000. And then lastly, there's some equipment that's essential to opening up the building. There's some lifts that Bill's quoted out. In addition to that, there's an air compressor that needs to be installed. So with these recommended items totaling $763,000, they're, they're just recommended items. The essential items that I talked about first are around $57,000. Gives you a total of $820,215. And this is what your balance is remaining, that you have ability to spend. And if you spend the full amount above recommended, you would still end up with about $438,000 available for other capital projects if you deem them necessary. So the schedule, I now answer questions at the end or interrupt me, whatever you wanna do. But the schedule related to things, you know, we started in March of '23. We have substantial shell completion here in January. We're anticipating the substantial completion of all the mechanical work and the fire suppression work to be in April. At that time, we could do temporary occupancy on the building. We have other building and site stuff that would have to be completed in May. And we list final occupancy only because the switchgear for the project, which was ordered immediately after the bids were awarded, was a 15-month lead item. If you recall, we started this project very post-COVID. We've, we've not gotten any change in that date, but that's just something that's affecting the August, fully occupied. But there's a lot of things that could, could go on up there and get done until that time. And if the switchgear comes in any earlier, obviously, the estate would move up. So just some recommended next steps. If the board sees fit to authorize these, this additional work as recommended in ordering the, purchasing the equipment and the landscaping, we would probably recommend to, to bid as a separate package to install the paving in the spring of 2024. We'll probably get better prices on that because we would be able to take that off of the general contractor totally, and he has no problem with that. And then we could bid by separate contract, the improvements to Clinger Road. We need to think about getting ready for the salt storage facility, which was obtained or will be, as the grant money comes through for that, that the, the salt storage facility could be worked on in 2024. And then I just have an option, reviewing options for what to do with the existing Public Works facility once it's vacated here later in the year. That's the summary. I can answer any questions.
Dan, isn't there another forty-seven thousand due to store for spreading and covering that pyrite?
Oh yeah, yeah. It's all, that's all included in the remaining funds, Ron. We've accounted for that. It's already, that's already in action.
And Bill, maybe, sorry, the point setters are beautiful, but they're throwing me off a little bit. Maybe point out too that the landscaping isn't just to make the building look nice, that it serves a purpose. Bill, do you wanna explain quickly?
Sure. Part of the landscaping detail that's planned, that was originally planned for the project includes spruce trees along the boundary with the residential area in the Public Works facility to act as a site barrier, but more importantly, a sound barrier. I think there's a total of 13 spruce trees to be planted along there. And also, coming up the driveway, we have trees that are also to be planted. We used a local nursery, Godwin's, out on Route 18 for the quote. And it was well under $8,000. It was about $7,500 for 93 trees, which is a really good price. And I think we're past the point right now where we could actually plant. We'd have to wait till spring to get that planting done. But we certainly are more than capable of doing that in-house with our Public Works crew that early in the season, so.
And then Tom, one of the things that you've been asking for or pushing for, and I agree with, is the repair, or not repair, oh my gosh, not repair, but road improvement, stick Clinger Road. The bond, we have more than enough bond money to do that if this board would be interested. Do you wanna describe what you've been talking about? Dan, do you wanna describe it?
Sure. So this, this is the picture of Clinger Road at the Public Works Building. You can see this is an older adaptation of the site plan, but I think it's, I think it's pretty close. Just to orient everybody, this is Clinger Road, obviously. This is the, we'll call the existing conditions plan. So the idea is to come in here and actually improve the curvature here to create more site distance as you come around this bend. Both horizontally, that would be that you could see looking to your left and your right as you approach the bend, and then vertically by diminishing some of the grade difference that creates sort of a blind spot as you work on a vertical curve. So this is, this is the projection. We're, we're cutting through this area to, to make it a clear site distance and improve it with this proposed grade along the road.
In our, in our language, it's taking the hump out of that road.
Yes, that's the easier way to put it, Tom. Thank you.
Wait, what did he say?
Take the hump out of the road.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Hey Dan, how much cover is it gonna leave on that trestle?
Mine isn't working.
Sorry, Ron.
How much cover will it leave on that trestle?
On the, this'll be, I don't think we even get into the trestle, Ron.
It's not, it's not near the trestle.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're way up from that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just wanna say this, you know, love this project or hate this project. This was something that absolutely, absolutely needed to be done. I don't know if you remember, but about six months ago, we put up pictures of the current conditions that our Public Works guys are working in, in a building that's literally falling apart with equipment that doesn't fit in. We're paying for equipment that's now being housed outside, so it's being exposed to the elements. You know, love or hate social media, there's been a lot of talk on social media about how we can't afford this, it wasn't necessary, it's the Taj Mahal, what have you. And none of that could be farther than the truth. And I just wanna point this out. This board is building this, which is a much-needed facility, once in a lifetime. We're not building a Public Works building every year. We're not building it every five years. We're not building it every 10 years. You won't find a municipality in the area that is zero, that has zero debt. This is essentially what a mortgage is, what you would pay for, for your home that you live in, which is what we're providing for our Public Works guys who not only deserve it, but provide a service to our residents. And you know, I've been quiet about it because I figured at the end of the day, we were doing the right thing and people would see, but I'm not gonna be quiet about it right now because we can afford it. We are paying for it. You will see later on in the budget, we are approving a budget that has a 0% tax increase. You will not see a tax increase this year. You would not see it next year, either based, you know, based solely on this building. And it even allows us to have excess money for capital, additional capital projects at the end. So I just hope that you go out to the public, to the neighbors, if you see something on social media, and kind of stop the crazy rumors that have been out there because they're just not true. And all it's doing is causing divisions in the community. I, I can only speak for myself, but I feel confident in saying that, that the members of this board, myself included. We spend your money wisely. We're not out there willy-nilly spending on stuff we don't need. We're not out there spending on stuff that the community doesn't need. And, and it's proven over and over again. So thank you, Dan, for this presentation. It, it will be available to the public. This is not a secret document. We're not trying to hide anything. We will be transparent. If you want my copy, you can have my copy. If you want an emailed copy, you can ask us. We'll email you a copy. There's no secret. But this was, this has been needed for our Public Works guys for 10 years, or longer, quite honestly, for as long as I've been on the board. And so it's not a Taj Mahal. It's a need, and we can afford it.
Cindy, one other thing I'd really like to see get straightened out. There's a lot of people on social media saying we took our property by eminent domain. We do not take it by eminent domain.
We started the eminent domain process, but he took the check, yeah. The other thing that I just wanna say, and this is just, if you attended our budget meetings, which, you know, Bill was the only one in the audience at the time, we're not broke. We, we have in excess of $4 million in various saving buckets. Act 13 money, LSA Gaming money, money that we've put aside to help the residents in, in Lawrence, the sewage project. We're not broke. So the, you know, the Chicken Little, the sky is falling, Cecil Township's broke, we're gonna raise your taxes, we're coming for your firstborn son, whatever the message on social media is, just, it's just not true. And, you know, I don't, I don't wanna come across harsh because that's not, and I really don't. Like I sit quietly and just let the attacks roll off my back because at the end of the day, this board works really hard. Some of us more than others, but works really hard to watch the money that we're spending. And so, you know, I just hope that you go into the Christmas holiday knowing that, that that's the case, that we're not broke, we're not coming for you or your hard-earned money, you know, that, that we're fought. We're in a good financial position. We have an exceptional bond reading right now, better than most communities around us. So I, I don't know what else to do other than to say that, you know, there's a reason, the staff, I wanna take a second to recognize our staff. They work exceptionally hard to make us look good, our board members look good, and to make sure that things are running. I don't think anybody has any idea how hard and how much effort that they put in in order to make, you know, this township run. So just go into next year knowing that that's the situation right now. I can't, you know, I can't guarantee, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't see what's gonna happen in the future, but we're not broke, the sky's not falling, the project's gonna get done with excess capital, the road's gonna get done. There will be, the project will be completely finished, 100% with excess capital, so. It is what it is. So anyways, Dan, anything else?
Just not to, not to step into, step into trouble, but I, I wanted to bring the board up to date on a couple paving projects. Number one, North Apolly Road, if the board recalls, that project was supposed to be completed on November 30th. It's a really, it's an inconvenience to the residents that that project is not done. I'm not here to advocate for the contractor why he didn't get it done or why he shouldn't have got it done, but it's not done. I just wanted to report today that he told and has a commitment from his subcontractor, the paving contractor, to finish the work on Wednesday. So that's the current plan. I had some discussions with Cindy and Frank earlier about what to do with contractors in terms of, you know, completion dates. We do have completion dates in all our contracts. This project, we did work with the contractor. We knew schedule was an issue. He gave us dates. He didn't follow through on those dates for whatever reason. We have liquidated damages in the contract for exceeding the contract time. That's a board decision. If you want to apply those liquidated damages, you could withhold payment until the work, you know, to send a message until the work is done. I think the same thing applies to the regular paving program where Youngblood pushed some work into next year. And we, we, we understand the message from the board, loud and clear, that these projects have to be completed, you know, within a reasonable amount of time from when they're done. And, and it is challenging. I'm not gonna make excuses for contractors. There's contractors here on the board that understand that it, it is a difficult environment coming out of COVID. Like everything else, contractors are, there's less contractors, they have less people. It's very challenging. I heard a statistic from the Carpenters Union that for every nine people that retire, there's only one replaced in terms of contract people to, to do work. So it does give you an idea of what's going on in the industry. We work hard to try to get as many bids as we can here on the public side for the township. You strike a balance between, you know, trying to work with, with contractors versus hitting them ahead with a hammer. You know, the Apolly Road, we've tried to hit the hammer, and you know, that, that's what we need to do on a project like that that's inconveniencing so many people, where you can, you know, help people or work a little bit with people to get a better job and get it done on, on time. You know, we try to do that too. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know you have those on the agenda to consider payments.
I don't see them. Oh, I do see it. I do see it.
Yeah, they're both on the agenda. Yeah, they're both on the agenda, so that's all I have.
I mean, when we get to that, I do intend to ask the board for liquidated damages. For those of you that know, I put myself out there at, you know, at the contractors because they said they were going to be done, saying it was going to be open Tuesday, that is obviously not going to happen. But my frustration is, Dawn and I were in mediation for a legal issue today, all day, and instead of the contractor saying, "Yeah, my fault, you know, we didn't meet the deadline, what can we do to make this better?" I spent the day back and forth emailing him where he was blaming the residents of North DePauli Road for the reason that it wasn't done, which is just utter baloney. There was weeks, literally weeks, where the road was closed and absolutely no work was done, which is absolutely unacceptable. This project didn't come out of nowhere, he bid it, he knew the date, we had an unseasonably nice November, there's just absolutely no reason for the delay. And so, while I'm not one to, you know, as Dan said, put down the hammer, I'm going to ask the board members, and I hope they'll agree to assess liquidated damages on this specific project because they still refuse to take ownership of the fact that they didn't get it done. Like, Saturday was beautiful, there was no reason. You know, the week prior to that, I was outside doing stuff with my children in short sleeves, it was beautiful. Like, there's just absolutely no excuse for the delay in the project. And I'm not saying the work that he did wasn't good, because it was, and it is, but there's no reason that it should have sat for days on end without having anybody working and whatever. So, when we get to that, we can discuss it, but I don't think that we should issue a check, and I certainly don't think we should let him escape without applying damages. That's my opinion. I think we need to set the precedent to contractors, like, we want them to bid in our township, but if we put a date in there and they can't meet it, the very least they need to do is work with us or take ownership for why they can't. Anybody else want to say anything before we move on to resolutions?
All I can say is he did a lot of extra work up there, which Bill knows.
Yeah, well, he also said, and I can read, I'm happy to show you the email, that it was the residents' fault that he didn't get done. Resolution 206, 2023, consider acceptance of the relocation of School Street, do we have to do this? Okay. By the Cana McMillan School District, by deed of dedication and authorizing recording of the same.
Yeah, this is the final, final step in the process for relocation of School Street. The road is installed per the developer's agreement. The school district has acted like a developer in this case, so just like we accept roads from developers, we're accepting the road here. It's just a portion of a right-of-way. I just note it's the piece of the road that was actually built and paved. It's not anything outside of that that's being dedicated to the township. So, this area that's cross-tashed here is the area of deed of dedication.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes, I have nothing. Are you two okay down there? I'm starting to get worried that we need to, like, move this way, you both sound sick.
Don't come and kiss me.
I didn't plan on.
Let me just mention real quick that now that we've accepted that road and we have a deed of dedication, that'll be put back on our winter maintenance schedule.
Correct.
And we'll maintain that between Mose Bishop and I think it's Cherry Way.
Okay, thank you. You know what I just thought of, and this is unrelated to School Street, but can we make sure that we communicate with the school district related to when North DePauli is going to open? Because they moved the bus stop there to the end of that road, so when North DePauli's going to open, we have to communicate with them so the kids aren't walking or there's flow of traffic.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, sorry, unrelated, but it just occurred to me. 207, 2023, consider application for payment number two for the work completed to date for contract A of the 2023 pavement maintenance program to Youngblood Paving in the amount of $267,190.87. Do you want to, Frank, you want to say something about that?
Again, I mean, I think you talked about it, but Youngblood does nice work in that, but the past two years, they've not been able to complete our road paving programs on time. I think they've been comfortable with us working here probably the past six, seven years. We awarded the contract on March 6th, and they come in the middle of October to do our work, so I'm, I mean, my opinion myself, I would not be willing to pay them till the project's completed next April, may.
Charlie, did you want to say something?
I agree. I agree with Frank.
Does this board want to hold payment then on this, withhold payment, Ron?
I'll make that move.
What?
Make a motion.
Second.
Oh, it's been moved. Tom, were you making a motion or telling him to make a motion?
He's made a motion.
No, no, he's asking, you can't hear him because he's.
I'm making a motion, we withhold payment from Youngblood Paving on the paving contract A here.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
I'm not sure what you're saying. No, not you, Tom, are you, your vote, okay, okay. So, we're not making this payment? Four ones, sorry. You're going to, can you give me a thumbs up and a thumbs down? Thank you. 208, 2023, consider application for payment number two for the work completed to date for North DePauli Road retaining wall and grading project to Slusar Check excavating in the amount of $61,816.95. I make a motion that we withhold payment on this as well, and that we assess liquidated damages in the amount of $500 per day. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. Or, it passes to not make payment and to assess liquidated damages. 209, 2023, consider application for payment number nine for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility general construction project in the amount of $469,492.92 to Yule Construction Company, Inc., which includes the approval of change order one general. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. Carol, Tom was a yes on that. 210, 2023, consider application for payment number seven for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility electrical project in the amount of $32,817.95 to SEC Schultz Electric. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. 211, 2023, consider application for payment number six for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility plumbing project in the amount of $114,095 to First American Industries, Inc.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. 212, 2023, consider application for payment number three for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility mechanical construction project in the amount of $118,710.00 to East West Manufacturing and Supply Company, Inc.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. 213, 2023, consider application for payment number five for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility fire protection project in the amount of $4,995. To Alliance Fire Systems.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. Consider, 214, 2023, consider adoption of 2024 budget for the Cecil Township in the amount of $12,792,019. And like I said earlier, there is no tax increase for you and the residents of the township. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. 215, 2023, consider the 2024 tax resolution establishing 1.32 mils for general purposes and 0.18 mils for road machinery, and a total, for a total of 1.5 mils.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. 216, 2023, consider the 2024 wage and salary resolution. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. 217, 2023, consider amendments to the township's parking ordinance, that's a specific to Wildwood Drive, for those of you that were here last month, there is going to be, is it a two-car, I can't remember off the top of my head, it's a two-car limit on Wildwood with, you need a parking permit that will be issued by the township. You can, Veronica's back there clapping, you can stand up and clap or cheer, whatever you do. Well, we're happy to make you happy. There you go, you can get company now.
Can I say something? Was that changed, was that ordinance changed as far as $5 one-time fee?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And if somebody loses their hanger on that mirror, they pay for the five bucks to get it replaced?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you just do me a favor, just because we're streaming? Sorry, thank you.
I thought maybe she might have something on there.
Thank you. Is the hanger going to have our address on it as to, like, the two, that you park in front of this house, you park in front of that house, you don't park in front of this one down here because you live up here?
The hangers just have numbers, they're going to buy a Cecil Township, they're going to pass some instructions. The application process will be handled by the police department.
Okay.
I hope they have those forms maybe by Wednesday for the residents.
But we can include in the instructions that it specifically relates to.
Because I can truly see a wisecracker doing something that they shouldn't.
Then you call the guy on the end of our board table down there.
I will.
He'll take care of you.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. 218, 2023, consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from the Monday, November 6, 2023, regular monthly meeting.
So, moved.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. 219, 2023, consider the Board of Supervisors minutes from the Thursday, November 9, 2023, special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. 2020, 2023, consider the general fund invoices from November 1st through November 30th, 2023.
So, moved.
Second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Before we move on to general comments and questions, I have two things that I want to say. For those of you that were able to attend, it was a great event on Saturday, there was the Toys for Tots at Cecil Township Public Works. He's going to be super mad at me at the moment, and he's back there shaking his head, but Mark Secrety and our Public Works Department really deserve a huge round of applause for this. We're not going to stop clapping until you stand up. So, in total, it was $3,068 plus a lot of toys, if you had the opportunity to go down and see it, it was a phenomenal event, as it has been for years. What year is this? I forget.
19th.
That's what I thought, next year's 20. And so, a huge thank you. Mark takes vacation days and personal days and time off to go collect all this stuff, and so, it doesn't go unrecognized by this board, and he deserves a huge round of applause. Also, our board secretary, Carol Farkas, who likes to keep her head down and hide, she keeps this township going, don't let her fool you. She is the volunteer behind all of our events for us as far as, like, parks and recreation for the board, for the Fall Festival, but specifically this Toys for Tots, she deserves a huge round of applause as well. I'm constantly calling Carol to bail me out of stuff and help me with stuff, so thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do, too. Hold on, I have one more thing, and then I'll. And for those of you that don't know, and I'm going to try to get through this without getting choked up, but it is Supervisor Fleer's last meeting. From the guy who once called me an asshole in a public meeting, he has become one of my closest friends, and he is, like, for those of you that don't know, he loves this township more than I think anybody, and so, he will be dearly missed. And his, you know, his insight, I am constantly calling him, Ron, I don't understand what they're talking about, please explain this to me. So, he promises me he's not going anywhere, so, and I'm going to hold him to it, or I'm going to go hunt him down and bring him back, but his service, this township, is greater because of the six years that he has put on this board, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I told you I was going to make you cry, but it turns out I was the one that cried.
I want to thank everybody, it's been pleasant, I enjoy working with everybody, Sean, Bill, Donnie, Gretchen, a lot of good people work very hard in here, keep this township going. It's mostly not seen because it's during the day, but Cecil's still in great hands with all these people.
You're not going anywhere, nice try. We're still going to bother you. So, as with that, Tom, did you have something you want to say, if we can hear you?
Yes, I just wanted a general consensus from the board members. I'm hoarse, I'm yelling to my wife, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think it might be the other way around on that one.
Authorize, it's not a motion or anything, just asking her to prepare a 501(c)(3) for us to review for a Cecil Township Fire Department, just to prepare one that would work for us, for our paid guys and volunteers who want to join.
Can we authorize you to do that without it being on the form?
Yeah, it's just an administrative directive.
Just get it going, and I can bring it back to you all, present it for review.
Okay.
No, she wants it presented.
If you want to do that, that's fine. No, it's fine, that's fine, okay. And then, if there's.
For the January meeting, so you can look at it.
If there's no, or anything else by the board before we go on to citizens', general comments and questions, I promise I won't, I'm done crying, I'm done with the emotional stuff.
Could we look into getting that sign replaced out here?
That's on our, that's in the budget for 2024.
Okay, somebody's working on it, going to check on prices for it?
We have been, we have prices, we just needed a budget for it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah. Actually, didn't you, did you circulate them just to me? If it's just to me, I'll send them out, I'll send them out, I'll make sure to get them out of everybody. Now, moving on to citizens', general comments and questions. Go ahead, just step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Kate Walls, and this is my husband, John Walls, and we're here today to address the board. We're residents of Cecil Township for the last seven years at 215 Evendale Road, along with our two children. And in July of this year, we purchased a property, another property in Cecil Township, we're excited to stay, but we are looking to build a single-family home on that property. The property is located between Baker Road and New Morganza Road, or sorry, North Morganza Road. It's Zoned Residential 1, and I have a parcel ID, I don't know if you need that for reference, but we are not going to be able to build a home for approximately two years, just kind of the process of selling our current home, building capital to be able to do the project, but it is 11 acres of fully deciduous trees on the property, so we are wanting to ask the board permission to build a shed on the property prior to building our dwelling so that we can store some of our equipment that we have purchased to manage trees that are on the property and kind of in preparation of building the home. So, we realize that that is not something that is currently allowed by our township rules, so we're asking for an exception to be able to build the shed on the property.
So, unfortunately, we don't have the ability to grant an exception, so you have to go through the process of applying for a permit, and then if you need a variance or if you need to go before the zoning hearing board, you would need to do that, but this board doesn't have the legal ability or authority to go against our own rules and ordinances in order to grant you permission.
Okay. We were advised by Mr. Januso to come here today to make this request. We were advised by Mr. Januso to come here today to, uh, make this request.
You told them to come and make the request?
I mean, you can't...
The ordinance specifically prohibits auxiliary structures on a, on a lot without a primary structure.
Right. So...
It existed on speaking to someone, so I told them the only board they could address was the Supervisors and Public.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can come and bring it to our attention, but we have an ordinance on the books that, like, like Mr. Januso said, that prevents auxiliary structures without a primary structure. And since there's no, even though it's eleven acres of trees, there's no primary structure. So we can't, 'cause if we grant that exception for you, then the next person that comes up that wants us to go against our ordinance, like, how do we tell them no? So that, like, that's the ordinance on the books, and so unfortunately, that's, that's the way it is.
It seems that we have heard that there are other residents that have been granted this similar request. So is it something where they had to issue a permit?
Not in the twenty-six years that I've been here.
I don't, I'm not aware of anybody else who has an auxiliary structure. Yeah.
Okay, we got different information from someone in the township, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Not, not that they've gone through proper channels. Someone may have done that without, you know, gaining a permit. It is possible, but not that they've come through the, the official process or asked them to work for permission.
So what you're saying is we would submit the permit even though it's not currently approved by the rules? And would we come back to the board to get permission for that?
We, we couldn't grant, we can't grant permission. You could go to, you could go to the zoning hearing board and ask for a special exception or a variance. But we can't grant you just without, you know, just because you came to our meeting and asked for a special exception, we can't grant that.
So just to be clear, we would have to apply for a permit to build the structure and then present that to the zoning board?
Yeah, so you can talk, Jack King is our Director of Zoning. He said he'll talk to you afterwards and he can explain that process. I, I mean, I have to be honest, like, I understand the situation you're in, and I wish there was something we could do, but that's the ordinance on the books, and we have to follow the ordinance on the books, which says there, you can't have an auxiliary structure without a primary structure.
Okay.
And you aren't the, I mean, we did have one other gentleman who wanted a home office without a home. And we gave him the same information. You can't, we can't violate our own ordinances.
All right, apologies for wasting your time, thank you.
No, you did, please do not apologize. Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Stonemark, forty North DePauli. Um, a couple things that I wanna talk to you guys about tonight. First and foremost, thank you, Ron, um, for your service. You and I have butted heads many, 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 many times, called each other many, 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 many names. At the end of the day, you did a good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one of the other things I wanted to bring, bring up was, um, a few meetings ago, we talked about, um, as it turns out, talk about updating a lot of our ordinances that are out of date. There have been several ordinances that haven't been touched by this board or the zoning board in more than a decade. Some of them, I know I'm gonna get a lot of flack for it, but like, the oil and gas ordinance has not been updated. It doesn't even meet current state minimum standards. The sound ordinance is really, really bad and really, really vague. Um, it also doesn't meet general health standards. So these are all items that I think this board should address next year, or sooner the better. Is there any feeling on that from anyone?
I agree with that.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
What did he say?
He said he agrees with that.
When he does, look at it and update it.
I mean, those are just the two that I can think of off the top of my head, but there are several other ones as well that have been, you know, out of date for ever, for years. I also wanted to address the board about, um, and I know this is a sticky subject for everybody in the audience and a sticky subject for me and a sticky subject for the board members. But I wanted to address the board about, um, the well pad on the Augustine property. There is, has been a lot of truck traffic past our homes. And the conditions that were set in place when that pad was approved by this board was that it was to go up north of DePauli. And that was the route, was Route fifty to North DePauli Road and then stop at the pad. And now, since that road has been closed, um, trucks have been taking several alternate routes, including illegally coming up Coleman Road, which is a weighted road, which I know there's a weight limit on it. I know that we've heavily enforced weight limits on roads, on other roads in this township, including, I believe it's Baker over there by, um, going into Lawrence when that opened up. I know you guys heavily enforced weighted, weight limits on that road. Coleman has had nothing but problems since the moment I moved into this township ten years ago, twelve years ago. So I'd have to assume that it's not good for any trucks to be on that road. That being said, you know, one of the only, and I, and I, again, I know I'm gonna get a lot of flack for it. Yes, I was opposed to the well pad going in. I, yes, I sued Range to get it to stop, and I lost, okay? But the only, the only thing that I got out of all of that was that it wasn't, the traffic wasn't gonna be coming up past our house. So now that it is, like, just so you guys have a little bit of understanding, now that all that traffic's coming up, it comes up from here, goes down, and then they go and work on it right back here. So basically, my neighbors and I have three hundred and sixty degrees. So this temporary inconvenience is a three hundred and sixty-degree inconvenience for us. It's not temporary, it's all day. And I have spoken with Range, I have spoken with Laurel, I have, you know, she has assured me that these things that are happening, you know, that her and I have, we have a, a pretty good relationship, so I'm not, I'm not upset with them. I know they have a job to do. What I'm upset about is the fact that the road has been closed for so long and that this township hasn't implemented anything with, worked with them to fix the problems, they, fix the issue that was in your conditions to begin with. Like, you guys set the conditions, so why is it being allowed for them to go all the way around? It's not our fault the road's closed. It's not our fault that they're starting again. So I have to blame somebody that this is happening, so what do we do?
Michelle, um, I talked with Laurel today, and, uh, Range's subcontractor was doing the hauling, dropped the ball on this. They, they were not permitted to be on that lower half of, uh, Coleman Road.
Right. And...
They did apologize, and, uh, Range is taking the matter up with, uh, their sub.
Okay, and the other issue, the other trucks the other day that were going up that route? I mean, they're still going past our house, so they shouldn't even be, the well pad traffic is not supposed to go that way.
Well, the thing is...
So here's my question, why is well traffic allowed to happen when the road isn't open?
I have a copy of a permit. Uh, it's a cover blanket for any road, it covers any road in Cecil Township. When there's a road closure, they're allowed to use, this is a, a bond. It's an emergency bond for any road in Cecil Township. It covers Range's resources.
So the township doesn't have to notify us that that's happening? So even though you put in your conditions, that's the traffic route they need to take? You don't think it's necessary that anybody informed us that that was happening?
No, that you should be informed.
I think you're talking two different things here.
I think Laurel informed her.
You're thinking what?
Bonding a road, and you're talking about overweight on roads.
I'm talking about primarily...
I know exactly what you're talking, Coleman Road is only five-ton weight limit. Like you said, Baker Road's only seven-ton. I don't think DePauli has a weight limit on, does it?
But Range gave you guys a hundred thousand dollars to fix the bottom part of DePauli, which they're paying for, for that project, and now they're not using it.
Well, it's not open, Michelle, it's still closed due to the contractor working on the wall.
I, I understand that, Frank, thank you for clearing that up. I'm very well aware of that. Why wasn't I made aware of the fact that the well pad stuff was going to start again? And all the traffic was gonna increase past our homes?
Dan, aren't they also holding up to see if we got that grant for that storm work?
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, that's...
No, but about to finish the bottom of that...
Oh, to finish the road, yes, correct.
Mrs. Barney, did you have something to tell me?
What's that?
Did you have something to tell me to before, when Ronnie spoke?
No.
Okay. So there's just no, so when the road closes again in April and they're now drilling again, does that mean all the heavy equipment's gonna come past, past our houses?
The road's supposed to be open, right?
Well, they have to reclose it to pave it, am I wrong?
As soon as the road gets open, Frank.
Temporarily.
They do, if they, if we get the grant for storm work, they'll have to close it again in the spring for a couple of weeks.
For a couple of weeks? And that's right when they're going to be...
In the spring.
Right. And that's right when they're gonna be doing either the big rig or the fracking, which is constant traffic twenty-four-seven?
Well, Sean, have they talked to you about your policeman being down here like they did last time?
No one's contacted me about any future traffic enforcement or anything, no.
It just seems poor coordination to me between the roadwork and the well pad. It's poor coordination. If you want to have both things going on, then you need to coordinate better and work with Range to make sure that the people who are the most inconvenienced already aren't further inconvenienced. That's all I'm trying to say. Because I, you know, to be, to be frank, and this is just me getting mad, but to be frank, like, all we heard during the, during the initial conditional use hearings was that it was a temporary inconvenience, it was a temporary inconvenience, and when they started drilling in twenty-twenty, it wasn't temporary to me. It was about eighteen months of an inconvenience. And fine, it's over, we all moved on, whatever, whatever, whatever. But now they're gonna drill four more, eighteen more months. So how much is temporary, guys? Like, for real? And now I gotta put up with the three hundred and sixty degrees around my house?
I agree with you, should've all been notified. Everybody on that road should've been notified. They surely got your address.
Everybody has my address.
Hey, Frank.
Hi, I'm, uh, Jeremy Sheridan, I live at fifty-eight North DePauli Road. One question before, it was almost overlapping with her, was, uh, who was, is it the township that's actually making the payment for the North DePauli project? Just us, by ourselves, nobody's helping?
No, we got, we got a hundred thousand dollars from Range for North DePauli.
And I guess, Ron, you probably know a lot about this. For the, the bonding and insuring, if, yeah, if it's a five-ton weight limit on Coleman, they, if they bonded Coleman, they've bonded every single road in Cecil?
Yeah, that's what the permit covers. This is an emergency permit.
That's the emergency commit. Now, did they give you a maintenance plan for every single road?
It would fall probably under the scope of work of damages to any other road that they travel on or responsible for. This just covers every road throughout Cecil Township wherever there's a closure at.
Okay. All right, that answers that.
Jeremy, it says fifty thousand dollars, Cindy says there.
Yeah, so this is, I didn't, this is the first I'm seeing this, but it says that we arrange resources and it gives their address, and, you know, with their insurance company, it says, in the sum of fifty thousand dollars, which really isn't a ton of money when it comes to road repair.
I ain't gonna get you anywhere, but that's fine, yeah. The other thing I've noticed is, I've, I've been a commercial driver for twenty-five years, and I kinda know all the rules of the roads, and I've done a lot of oversized hauling, uh, know my DOT regulations. Uh, I just recorded a guy today going up Coleman Road where no license plate on his trailer. Uh, I've heard multiple times, jake braking with the guys with the big seven-inch stacks, rah rah. Besides Range having their own, you know, they, they don't allow the jake brakes. That's a township thing also. That's, that's a noise ordinance issue, that should be fined right there.
That's not entirely correct, Mr. Sheridan.
Why's that?
Because jake brakes are regulated by the state of Pennsylvania, even with, on, even on township roads. It's a, it's a, uh, the jurisdiction of the Commonwealth to regulate jake brakes even on township roads. So if the township wanted to, uh, they, they couldn't just arbitrarily say, hey, listen. But that would be a, a, a specific route, yes. But I was just going to, you know, jake brakes cannot just be outlawed.
I believe the jake brakes, I thought that that was anywhere under, under, oh, you can use jake brakes, anything over thirty-five mile an hour posted, unless it's posted on a road. But I believe it's a residential, anything less than thirty-five mile an hour or less, you can't use a jake brake 'cause it's considered a supplemental brake. Whenever I took my license, tech, in, in your book, the, if your permit and then your on-driving test, I don't think I've ever seen, or you could ever ask any tester ever, if somebody had a jake brake on during their test because it's a supplemental brake. It's not supposed to be used as a brake.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the motor vehicle regulations, I can only speak from the restriction perspective of the township. What I'm explaining is that the township lacks that jurisdiction to just arbitrarily restrict jake brake use on township roads
They can't give out a ticket.
Without first petitioning the Commonwealth for an evaluation of that roadway. That's, that's the process that we have to follow. I've, I've gone through it several times, that's why I know.
So even though, like, you know, Range has their signs up, but specifically saying no jake brakes?
That's, that's a different condition. That, that was part of the conditions that were put in for Range at that well pad. That's a completely different animal, with the, we're not comparing apples and apples here.
So I can just yell about it all day and it doesn't matter?
I'm just, I'm just explaining, I know regarding jake brakes, that's...
Gotcha, okay. And then, uh, like I said, I, oh, uh, is there any of the, of our officers that are, you know, in the process or one that might be certified for DOT, uh, inspections?
No, we don't have anybody. Unfortunately, that's a lot of money and a lot of money to upkeep. So if we do need assistance, we call the state police if there's an incident. And if you do drive a truck, you know, if there's a issue with brakes, maintenance, or weight, we call the state police to assist us. But there's money in scales and you gotta send them to Harrisburg, that's a lot of money that is not gonna be able to be budgeted for. Especially the amount of traffic issues we have here with trucks.
Right, that's, 'cause I've, I've noticed a lot of different townships have a lot of their officers now...
And they're going away from it now too, 'cause of expenses to keep everything updated and certified.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then getting back to the, the bonding of the roads, how they said that it was an emergency. How's that an emergency? Just, I understand, I don't wanna stop business either, but emergency as opposed to their emergency or the safety or well-being of the people going up and down the roads there, guys?
I was kinda out of this 'cause I was out of town over the weekend, but like, looking at this, we do need to reach, circle back with Range, with Gretchen. Obviously, fifty thousand dollars isn't gonna be enough to cover, um, like, even anything. And like, it's from twenty-fourteen, like, this is an email from Laurel to Jack. I'm not really sure what's going on here, but we will look back into this. As Gretchen had said, and I agree with her, like, they, they know the alternate route they're gonna take, so they need to bond the alternate route that they're gonna take, not just any road in the township. So to me, this is just a, we're driving through the township, if something crazy happens, we're gonna, we're gonna cover it. But if you know you're repeatedly taking Coleman Road or Dawn directed them to repeatedly take Range while North DePauli is closed, they need to bond to those additional roads. And, uh, Dawn, Gretchen, and I will circle back with them and make sure that that bond is covered. Hopefully the road, hopefully North DePauli is open next week so they won't have to. But this, this is not gonna, this is not gonna solve the problem.
Yeah, but they should be told to stay off of Coleman, the lower part, completely.
Dawn did, they were. Sure, yeah.
Yeah, the subcontractor hauling for Range dropped the ball on that one.
But to be fair, Frank, like, we're...
There's a big sign right there.
It happens, hey, truck drivers, you never know what you're gonna get.
To be fair, we're pounding on Youngblood because they didn't listen. We're pounding on Sussar Check because they didn't listen, and we're gonna say, well, sorry, it happens. Like, we can't say, sorry, it happens. We need to make sure that they are abiding by the rules and Coleman has a, a posted weight limit. Their sub, whether or not they meant to or not, knew that they were over the weight limit and they shouldn't have been on that road. So it's not really that difficult.
Bill, Bill, that weight limit's not on all of Coleman, right?
No, just a, uh, portion between, uh, Miller's Run and, um...
DePauli.
North DePauli.
Sorry, I was writing...
No, Coleman Road.
Yep.
Yeah, between Miller's Run and North DePauli, that's where it's restricted.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If you come down from Bednars, there's a, uh, a weight restriction there.
Right.
And if you're coming down North DePauli, there's a no-left turn, uh, there, uh, with the weight restriction right there. And one of the reasons why I'm asking about this is the bonding and insured... And one of the reasons why I'm asking about this is the bonding and insured is, I still remember, it's got to have been five years ago since Columbia did the gas line up there, right? I mean, it had been five years ago. I remember them saying they're bonded and insured, and, you know, they took out scrapes of asphalt down at the bottom of DePauli where you go onto Coleman with low boys, and you can see the potholes are already starting in the middle of the road. It's been five years, they're bonded for, what, is it seven years after they get done until it's all thrown out? That they're not responsible anymore, or, because like, whenever, when anything gets done there, does Columbia gas come back and pay, still?
I don't actually know. We'll have, I'm not actually sure, so we'll have.
I'm just saying, like, there's all.
I don't think it would be bonded for seven years, it's kind of lengthy.
That's, well, I'm not saying, if Range is bonded and insured on all these roads, and, well, that's all good and great and everything, but they're going to be gone and everything, and we're never going to get any money. They're supposed to kick a bunch in, but, I don't know. I just, that's the only comment I had. Thank you, guys.
How you doing? Merle Lescot, 383 Coleman. Just make one little comment after Jeremy there, you know, when Range is gone, I don't think they're going to be gone. It's not a conditional use, it seems like it's unconditional use. They can stay forever. However, I'm going to get off of that horse. What I want to talk about is the traffic control since that road was closed. Okay, the traffic coming down by my place has been incredible, besides the big trucks coming up and down and unregulated. I have made several 911 calls to the township. We had an incident where a tree came down, and everybody was coming down and turning around in my driveway and tearing the shit out of the bottom of my driveway. Okay, that's an emergency. The road was closed up at DePauli while repairs were made. Then the road was reopened and then reclosed, and people started coming down and turning around in my driveway. I made a 911 non-emergency call and said, "We need traffic control here", it was approximately 1 o'clock in the afternoon. At 3 o'clock, there's people coming down, still turning around in my driveway, tearing it up. I talked to somebody, I said, "What are you doing? The road's closed." I was, it was an altercation, I was threatened, my family was threatened, I made another 911 call. The police actually showed up this time, came into my driveway, and I said, "This is unacceptable. I'm getting threats from traffic people coming down the road. You sit in my driveway, sit here and watch the people coming up 100 miles an hour. I can't even pull out of my driveway, I've got to launch because they're coming so fast because there's no control. I understand this may be ending soon, and I hope so, but that's the part that I'm really upset about. And then I start seeing the traffic coming up with these big trucks, coming up to Range, going up and making, you know, just these circles, like everybody said. We're encircled by this. They're all around us. They seem to have no law and order. There is no law and order anywhere around us. What is going on? I've got a daughter who's trying to learn how to drive, and she's afraid to go on my back road to get out because the traffic is horrendous, and people are just not thoughtful. And now I've got these giant trucks who do not slow down and are running her off the road, running me off, running everybody off the road. How is this acceptable? That they are not held accountable? Nobody's held accountable. My taxes are there every year. I've been here longer than they have, anybody has. But it seems like I have no rights. They have all the rights. You're not holding them accountable. Oh, they bonded the road for 50, well, you know what, they always have an excuse. It was the subcontractor that did it, that's not me, wasn't me, wasn't me. That's, that's bull. I'm not making an excuse. I'm asking for just something equal. You'll pull me over for not to stop at a stop sign, but you won't pull them over for dragging a big truck up on an unauthorized road. Just doesn't seem right.
Anybody on the board want to say anything?
Sean.
Sean. He's listening.
I wouldn't care whether they bonded all the roads like Ron said, or Frank said. If that road's weight's restricted, Coleman I'm talking about, why aren't the police stopping them?
Well, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but no one's called the police department. I got no complaints about speeding cars on that road. It's the first time.
Two 911 calls.
That's two times, and that was the tree incident. I'm not going to argue with you. I will have a police officer sit over there, big call, and let us know that that much traffic is on that road.
To be fair, I think that, and I'm not going to call somebody out, I think that there is a communication issue within our township. I think that the residents are calling a certain person within the township, and then that information is not being communicated to the rest of us. Yeah, so, I, while the rest of the board doesn't want to say it, I will speak up and I will apologize because I do think that some of these issues could have been resolved if, one, you would have been communicated better that this was happening again, and, two, if you were complaining that those complaints were being escalated to the township manager, to our chief of police, and to this board. I was away, so I didn't, I didn't know, and quite honestly, I just looked through all my emails, and I looked on our township website, and there's not really any information out there. So for that, I owe, from our board, we owe you an apology for that. And we will, we will address that specifically. But please, you don't, I mean, obviously, call Range because there's that 1-800 number, but please don't hesitate to call 911, call Sean. The only way that we're going to get this addressed is to not call the township specifically, but to call the police. Because they, as Tom said, they can pull people over if they're overweight on a weight-restricted road, regardless of the bond that Range has in place. Can you just step to the microphone?
I wasn't done, no. Sean, no. Nobody was aware that the trucks are using Coleman Road?
No, we're not aware of it, and it's hit and miss. I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, make it sound like we're short-staffed, but we have 27 square miles, we get about 20 to 30 calls a day. So, you know, I'll have officers out there and assign them, let me know. I got five complaints minimum a week with speeding vehicles. We're doing our best. I'll have lines put out there, we've got speed trailers, I just put speed trailers on Burnside Road, it's 25 there, it's a highway. We're getting them going, we're pulling cars over today. I had a complaint yesterday. Give me an opportunity. I understand, I remember the tree incident. Unfortunately, there was a pole taken out, they had to come back. The power company did not tell the township or the police department that the road was closed again. So there is a story behind that story, but please. Well, I wish I could have stopped that from happening.
Merle, Merle, because we're recording, if you just want to, no, you're fine, I want to hear what you have to say. If you want to have a conversation, that's fine, but please just step to the microphone so that when we record it, we have that.
Other people can hear us, yes. Okay, call, please.
All right, Sean.
If I know now, I'll have an officer out there, yes.
Sean, but also, that road is vulnerable, though, for the big trucks.
We understand that.
Speeding is one issue, we haven't been a lot of township roads, but that road is vulnerable to big trucks.
Yeah, and please understand, I can't have a police officer sit there all day long, and when they get a 911 call, they have to leave. So it is really hit and miss on the traffic. I think, again, communicating with Range, unfortunately, the road closed is causing you more traffic. I think we all agree with that, and especially the detour issue with the tree down was even more of a nightmare for us. But I'll have police officers over there, hopefully we catch them. Let us know when these truck traffics is going through, if it doesn't stop after this meeting, and we'll be over there at the timely, you know, whenever the trucks are going through. But give us the opportunity, again, I mean, I know about that incident, but we do not know about the amount of traffic and speeding cars on there.
In defense of Sean, people are speeding everywhere. Go to McConnell's Road, any of these roads, they're running 14 and 50, they're not doing 25.
Can I ask a question? Did Range tell you, Jack, that they were going to use Grange Road or Coleman Road?
Cindy, I was told that tonight, no. Them drivers knew to haul Grange to Coleman. I deal with this every day, in construction, truck drivers get lost, they're hauling loads of asphalt to me, they take a wrong road. This happens every day.
But I think it's, I think.
So they're dealing, believe me, Range Resources is dealing with Tenmao, who was the subcontractor. I mean, because they were on the wrong road.
But I don't think, my issue is, I don't think it was just one truck. So like, I guess, I just asked Gretchen, and I don't know how this board feels, and I'm going to ask you, can we ask Range to hold off for four days until North DePauli opens? North DePauli is the road that they put their money on to use to get, it's the shortest distance and the shortest inconvenience for residents. Can we ask, reach out to Range, through Gretchen, through Dawn, through whomever, and say, "Can you hold off from now until next Monday when it's"?
They have to make one more move, and it's going to be tomorrow. They have to get a rig to another site, and it has to be tomorrow. I mean, they, the drivers know where to go, we can't drive the truck for these people.
They're putting up the sound walls now, additional sound walls on the.
They have to move, they have to move a rig off that site, one more move tomorrow.
So, we could tell them, I mean, there's nothing to stop this board from telling them no. Like, it's, and I'm just asking, look, like, I have sympathy for the residents because Michelle's right, like, we're sitting here, certain members of this board are, and I'll just say it, Darlene, like, I'm just asking you for help on this, like, you've advocated for the residents of Klinger Road related to the Public Works Building, and I'm asking you to advocate for the residents of North DePauli Road related to this. Four days is not going to make or break.
I don't have a problem with that, as a matter of fact, I was told that they were just moving in additional sound walls to be put up. They didn't take the other ones down, they're putting more sound walls up as a barrier. But I think they were under the impression that North DePauli Road was going to be open. Did they really know that it wasn't open whenever these trucks were coming by? I mean, didn't they say that the road was, North DePauli was supposed to be open last week? Well, I don't know, I can, I can call, I don't have a problem with that, I don't. I don't have a problem with them holding back up four days or whatever. And I think Michelle knows that Laurel talked to her that they were coming back to Augustine Well Pad.
So, so what I'm going to do, if this board's okay with it, is I'm going to call Laurel, and I'm going to ask them, I'm going to say, "This board is, is saying you need to wait. You need to wait four days until North DePauli's paved, and then you can come up North DePauli."
Are we going to be sure that North DePauli's going to be paved, being it's being so cold, unless they're going to get it done this weekend?
It's supposed to be 50 on Thursday.
That's what I heard, I heard 60 on Saturday, let's hope.
Yeah.
And it's not raining because they've paved in rain, right, Frank?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but so, if you're okay with that, then I will make that call to at least advocate on behalf of the residents because, to be fair, this is the second time they're coming back to.
Yes, it's the second time, but it's, this time was just with the sound walls. They're not planning on fracking the Augustine Well Pad until July. So those, those rigs aren't coming.
Right, so can I interrupt for a second? You're correct, I did talk to Laurel, and we did talk about the sound walls coming up. But they took the sound walls down because there hasn't been activity up there. So it's not like they're putting more up, they're just re.
That's not what I was informed. Okay, let me talk a minute, okay? Let me just talk a minute. I was told that the majority of the sound walls were not taken down, and that they were putting up more for, as a noise barrier for you people along North DePauli.
Okay, I have, I don't appreciate you calling me "you people", but.
New residents, all right.
Yeah, that's better. Let's, let's be clear, there are sound walls around the pad, around our homes. They took down a big chunk of them, right at the corner, basically that bend where North DePauli and Coleman meet. They took down a big, the big corner of it. They've been, since they're coming back out, putting them back up. I have been in conversations with Laurel about it, she has told me these trucks were going to come through. She did tell me, you know, told me when, you know, I would expect this traffic and that traffic. She did not tell me anything going into this week about what was going to be going on. I don't blame her because she's been on vacation, she said, when I talked to her, so I'm not going to bother her while she's on vacation. That being said, I'm less concerned about what's going on right now than what's going to happen in the spring when they're, and I know you said they're not supposed to frac until July, but that means that they're going to be doing the big rigs and the horizontal drilling in the spring. And that's what I'm concerned about, that road being closed again for four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, and all that traffic continuing to go past our house. And that's what I'm upset about, because it says so, in the, in the conditions that you guys set, you set them for them, that they have to take North DePauli. So I don't care if they come in and say, "Hey, here's an emergency, $50,000, sorry, we're, have to use a different road", no, you tell them, you can't, you can't use, you have to use this road, this is the road you're paying for, this is the road we said you could use, when it's open, feel free to come up and frac your little brains out, like.
So here's what I'm going to say, you're not wrong. So I'm going to, I mean, and I don't know who's going to be chairman next year, but right now, tomorrow, I'm going to call Laurel and have the conversation with her, and we need to communicate, this board and this township needs to communicate better with Range related to when they're coming specifically, and, and when things are going to happen, and we need to communicate better with the residents. We have Schultz and Connor Samuel's information up on the website, but I'm looking right now, and we don't have Augustine, we need to update that. We need to better communicate, which I think will solve a lot of these, like, issues. We also, I have this board's permission to ask them to wait four days until North DePauli reopens, and so that they're not on Grange or Coleman encircling you guys. So I'm going to make that phone call as well and ask them to do that. I don't think that that's unreasonable, four days, especially if they're not fracking till July, isn't going to make or break their operation. And we will make that commitment to you.
I guess what I'm, the big question I'm asking is, and I'm not letting my emotions get the best of me, rather than being very clear, I guess what I'm asking for is, rather than us running into the same situation in the spring when the road closes again, I want to make sure that we tell them ahead of time, or that if you guys would be willing to tell them ahead of time, you know, nothing while the road is closed. And that's all we're asking for, we're not telling you, we're not asking them to stop, we're not asking them to discontinue operations, we're just asking for them to take the route they're supposed to take.
I mean, I don't know, their fracking, drilling schedule, once they start, I don't think they can stop. I mean, that's the thing. I know, but when it starts, you just can't tell them, "Okay, stop".
That's why I want you to do something about it now.
We'll stop the contractor from moving forward, that's all.
Right.
Until they, until Range gets done.
Yeah, we will sit down with Range, with Gretchen, and talk this out, and make sure that we're all on the same page, and figure out where the communication lapse fell apart. What's your question?
If they can't stop, that doesn't mean, they have the right to use DePauli Road, they can go up 980 and up. Just because the road's blocked, it doesn't mean they can get on our five-ton road.
Agreed.
They're not supposed to be on a five.
You've got to have the police up there and stop them.
They're not supposed to be on a bottom portion of Coleman, it's five-ton weight limit, they're supposed to. Yeah, again, how many times would it say a subcontractor for Range, Tenmao, was on the wrong road?
Was it one truck, though? It sounds to me like it was more than one truck.
That's what I'd like to know, how many trucks was it?
They're saying at least four, so that's not one lost truck driver, that's an ordinance.
It's four, four lost truck drivers.
Real quick, Kara Sheridan, 58 North DePauli, most of my points have already been made. But the one thing I want to say is, we shouldn't be asking Sean what he heard, and hearing what Frank heard, and hearing what Darlene heard, and hearing what everybody else heard. The information should come to a centralized place within township and be disseminated to the residents. That updated plan for North DePauli Road on the website has not been updated since December of 2021. No one, as far as I'm concerned, was aware that the sound walls were coming in until they started seeing the sound walls coming in. Like, we have to be transparent in communications with what's going on. Like, we have to be transparent in communications with what's going on, especially, and it's not just the fact that it's a five-ton weight-limited road, it's compounded by the closed road, by traffic in either direction. I know we have speeding all over the township, but we don't have as many issues with such narrow roads, with such large trucks trying to pass passenger vehicles and speeding at the same time. So it's a compounded issue, and we need to solve, we need to know ahead of time what's going on. That way, we can all tell our neighbors, be more careful, drive more safely, there's these more truck traffic that we're expecting. We have no visibility. Last time I heard fracking, drilling was going to happen in January or February. Then I heard February or March. Now we're hearing fracking is happening in July. What is actually happening? Like, they should, and I understand plans change and they can shift it over time, but they went up there and started doing something, and they didn't tell anybody. They didn't tell any of us in any official capacity what they were doing, so it's coming as a surprise to everyone, and we're in reactive mode. That's all I'm saying is, it has to be better planned for ahead of time.
I mean, yeah, I agree.
They do have an open house workshop December 13th at their offices.
Right.
In South Point, Range Resources does.
Yeah. Is it on the website?
Yeah.
You wanna pull it up?
No, it's all right.
Cindy, I just wanted to say that if it wasn't for Jeremy, I wouldn't have known about that truck today. And I just wanna say thanks to Jeremy for sending the video of the truck. At that point, as many times as I talked to Mr. Sheridan today, I never heard about four trucks. I only heard about one. And that's the one I called Range about, and they finally confirmed that, yes, it was, and they apologized profusely for that error. So I, I don't know anything about four trucks.
I think Kara Sheridan was 100% right. I think a lot of this is because we're reacting instead of being proactive. And so I think what we need to do is take a step back, have a conversation with Range, understand exactly what their plan for Augustine is, relay that to the residents, make it available on our website. I think we really haven't had very many issues with Schultz and Connor Samuel because we've done a good job with that, and for some reason, Range just isn't communicating specifically about Augustine, but we'll get that cleared up and, and hopefully, I know it's not gonna make the inconvenience go away, but at least you'll know what's coming.
The, uh, the last Augustine update that I received was last week. Prior to that was August, so, or, of any of the wells.
I just looked. I, I have all kinds of stuff for Bernard Schultz and for...
Nothing for Connor Samuel.
Connor Samuel, but nothing for Augustine. So we'll, we'll get that corrected. Any other comments or questions by residents?
Just one thing, Cindy. There is an open house on the 13th. I've got it posted on the Cecil Township Watch Dogs because Laurel has it out. Do you not have it on the website, on the township website?
It's on Facebook.
Yes, and it's on Facebook. And I'm putting it on Cecil Township Augustine Wellpad that is being followed by a lot of people. And Windsor Woods is supposed to be informed by Range that that meeting is going to take place on December 13th.
I mean, that's great. And look, like, I think it's fine to have, but I still think that we need to get a better handle on, like, communication or residence. Not everybody's gonna be able to attend that, that here, or not hearing, that open house. So we shouldn't be finding out now when the sound walls are going in that they're going in. Like, we should know in advance. And we have good enough communication with Laurel that we can fix that, so we'll get it fixed. Can you just, sorry, can you step to the microphone? That's okay.
Just to be clear, Range has been, has answered every question that I've had. They have done everything they can possibly do, and I understand that they're running a business and they have a business to do. That's why I'm coming to you, because you're supposed to be our advocates. So I have no problem with how Range is answering my questions, and I'm happy to attend their, you know, open house that they're having.